Appreciate it. We had a playdate on Friday and my parent told me that on Saturday she's like, she's got fever and she's fat chill.
Oh, we call this meeting of council of October, actually since October first, twenty twenty five at six P M. To order. And without the public notice, uh today's meeting is being streamed live on the town of Annapolis Royal YouTube channel to those present. Uh in the gallery today by attending the public meeting, the council, you are consenting to having your image, voice and comments recorded. Anyone who is invited to speak will be recorded in their voice, image, comments will form part of the live stream. The chair and or the C I O have the discretion and authority at any time to direct the termination or interruption of live streaming. Such direction will only be given exceptional circumstances when deemed relevant. And we've never invoked that so far, and we're missing our member of the public to essentially hear Roger Lynn Bell.
Of course.
This is that lovely thingy. Okay, so. Uh, we have all members present except for Councilor Lynn Mars, who sent her regrets. And we have a few additions to the agenda. So we have an addition under new business, which is with respect to twinning. And we are also going to move Ken's presentation up, but so Ken Knox is in item fourteen one, we're going to move that up on the agenda and deal with that while he's here. And under also Mayor's Report thirteen two, we'll have an update on the mail, mail strike and press release from our C I O. And I guess under the new business for twinning reports, that will be under item fourteen seven. I think that's where that goes, fourteen seven.
Seven?
Uh-uh. No, twinning reports, why do I have fourteen seven? Oh, I'm sorry, that's a change to the minutes, nothing to do with this. If there are no uh other changes to the agenda, it is approved by Nana Swinseth. We'll move on to the minutes of September seventeenth, twenty twenty five. Are there any errors or omissions?
Well, can I know them?
Well, I have one. And and Sybil, you replied this change, so um. Yes, you did. So under fourteen seven, the minutes as they relate to twinning. The uh present, the five minute presentations that are being made are going to be made on October seventh. To uh to each other in the meeting, the twinning meeting, we're not making these presentations in Royale, France, very intricate detail. So if the minutes can be changed to reflect that. And if there are no further changes to the minutes, they are adopted by Nana Swinseth. That brings us to presentations.
Aye. We have no presentations.
We have no presentations. Uh, do we have any public input on any particular subject? No. That brings us to new business. Well, things are clicking along and we have one item under new business, but we're going to deal with. Uh, as we agreed, correspondence fourteen I, which is a concern about one Victoria Street. And I believe our director Ken Knox is here for that, or will you?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, so this is addressing the uh the R F D that you have in your packets and basically this is initiating from a correspondence town received, you know. The question has arisen. Is the land appropriate to sell? There may or may not be, but it is unknown contamination on the land from hydrocarbons. Um, we have attached to that R F D uh study conducted by engineer Paul Buxton, two thousand nine, I believe, so you you will have seen that. And so what the R F D is just kind of laying out the background, um. In the public works yard at large, there was a uh hydrocarbon storage facility for Texaco there and the pictures of those horizontal. Now, I mean, means something in a second, horizontal tanks were pictured. Um, engineer Buxton dug test pits, they did find contamination, they expanded those text pits until they found no contamination. Thereby defining the limits of a contaminated area in the center of the public work yard. Um, it's not a big deal for public works in the sense that, you know, we don't have a well, we don't, now we play in the dirt, but we don't plan that dirt. So that's fine. So, you know, our daily activities can occur there without danger to anybody and it's out open to the public. Um, that is the only area that was examined, but if you look at the report. Um, there's sketch one in the report. Um.
Page seven.
Written. Yeah, and and Paul, I'll tell you the page number second, I'm sorry.
Is it appendix seven?
No, it it ends up in the, it's hand drawn.
Page twenty four.
Page twenty four.
Page one, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so sketch number one. So it it shows uh where the horizontal tanks were labeled horizontal tanks. And then it shows a rectangle, which is essentially the public work yard, but then it shows a small structure labeled Imperial Oil and vertical tanks. And then if you were to go through another three, four pages, you see, ah, let me just make this so it doesn't. Uh, you see a building and you can see the vertical tanks behind it.
Hmm.
Um, and so this wasn't addressed. So what we're saying is the area that was tested, we know the limits of that contamination. Then that's fine, uh, it doesn't present a danger to anyone and that does not. Contaminate the lot that's for sale. We're confident of that because of the clean test bits that are around the contaminated area. But what we are saying in the R F D. Is that this other area under these vertical tanks that were owned by the railway, Imperial Oil is my understanding, that area was never. Tested and that is not addressed in the report by Mr. Buxton. Um, so that that that's um. That i- it's an unknown in this case. Anecdotally, work has occurred in that land and adjacent land and no evidence of contamination has been found. But anecdote anecdotes are not proof positive, but there there is some context to that. So what the R F D is saying is that essentially there are two courses of action and and it's not falling down firmly in either canvas, just trying to present it to you. That the lot could be sold as is and certainly information we have shared with the perspective buyer, you know, everyone is certainly in favor of full transparency. Um, if it is not contaminated, it's a moot point, it doesn't matter. Uh, if there is contamination, the land still could be used, uh, that's fairly low line, I mean, any structure there would probably be slaloon grade or modular on a frost wall, things like that, things that don't require significant digging. Um, putting in sewage line, a sanitary line and water to the house tapping from the main would not present an issue, uh, because it's not a lot. So and it's not a subject field. So we're saying it could be sold as is, sharing all information and that would be fine. Asterix, I am not a lawyer. Um, then the other recommendation is if. We want to know, and even test bins aren't proofs positive because they 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 randomly sample, so they find something or they don't take everything up. But we want to be much more certain than we could do test bits and have those assessed. I I spoke to one engineer who has done that work in the town, not Mr. Buxton. Um, and he estimated the cost at seventy five hundred plus tax. Um, if we were to move forward with that recommendation, we would, as per our procurement policy, seek other quotes for the work and then find value for money. And proceed according.
Thank you.
Questions?
Yes, from members of council, would like to start.
It wasn't that good.
No, it's already sad. He was looking at me and my brain froze for a moment there. I don't know what you did.
I gave you all, I gave you the look.
You gave me the look and I froze. Um, so the old, not so much a question, but just to add uh some information for discussion. Um. Because of the work that was done at the train station, there's actually. A lot of documentation that that exists prior to the engineering report that was included in this package. So there is, there's also a two thousand and three. Um, environmental report for this, uh, and that report didn't look at the public works sections. Per se, it was looking at kind of the overall transfer of the D N R lands at that time. So it included that section, it included the train station, it included the rail lines that were there. Um, there was, at that time, there was approximately twenty five uh test pits dug. Um, and according to that report, there was no evidence of hydrocarbons found in those test pits with the exception of a. Uh, they note that there was one area identified in the marsh behind the Queen Anne somewhere, so back along the railroad back there. Um, and there was also noted that there was um a number of actual coal uh spills. So where coal was spilled from the train when it was still coal powered trains. Um, there was some digging done at the time that the train station was uh initially. Uh, exchanged and and the renovations were started because. Uh, the power source for the train station is actually buried. And it runs from the corner of the lot that is for sale of of lot one there. Um, and there was also some work done, uh, I believe on the sewer line. And then the train station itself had extensive uh digging done around it for for uh French drains and other things like that. Um, in all of that, there's no record of any. In fact, the comments are that there was no hydro, evidence of hydrocarbons in that work. Um, again, not to say that there isn't anywhere else, but just to give as full of a picture of that piece of property as possible. Uh, one of the other things that was um noted in the documentation at that time. Um, and I have to say, I'm not sure if this relates to the Imperial Oil. Vertical tanks, but that the tanks that were on the other side of the train station parking lot, and that really would be the only. Place that they could have been, uh, were actually not fuel tanks, they were water. And so that's worth noting as well. Imperial had a building there, the trains were not refueled. At the Annapolis Royal Train Station, so they did not have that kind of service at the train station. Um, any trains that were running through here were refueled at other locations, they never fueled in the town of Annapolis Royal. Those, both Texaco and presumably the Imperial Building, were related to bulk. Services in the community, but not actually related to the rail yard.
That's good to know.
Yeah.
Uh. Anyone else? I'll just add that I was here at the time that Paul Buxton offered to investigate and uh. Yeah, so the report is as you see it, so I was aware of what was there, so I don't know that, I don't have any questions that I didn't ask at the time. So are you ready to consider the R F D? Yep. All right. So I believe you've got a draw motion.
No, I don't. Do not know which direction we wanted to go in and um. Staff are feel comfortable with the lots being for sale as is. Um, and. It's if council wishes to um go forward with the.
Option one or two.
Yeah.
Option one or two, yes, okay. So option one is. Yeah, and the second option is spending seven thousand five hundred on uh, you know, further study for reassurance.
Just to clarify for me, are we creating a motion now so that we can then have the discussion? Is that what we're, where we're?
Kind of had the discussion ahead of time, but we can do both.
I don't think others have had enough.
Just ask for questions.
Okay, all right, so let's put a motion out so we can discuss. Okay, so motion for option one or two, just to get the discussion on.
Uh, I'm, yeah, I'm really, I'm really bad at actually phrasing the motions, but I um, I moved to move forward with a quote of seventy five hundred dollars. We have the um. The property, so assess, I guess, for um possible nominations.
Also, no, all right, yeah, discussion.
Yeah, so I think um couple pieces for myself at least, we haven't had luck selling the property, I think. Once that information has been disclosed, it has been potentially a bit of a deterrent for people moving forward with the sale. So if we can say absolutely that there is no contamination, that might entice buyers to um move forward with the sale of it. Um, because I think regardless of whether or not the property is sold, some sort of assessment is going to have to be done either way. Um. If it is contaminated, I think it potentially opens up options for us to maybe do something different with the property, um. So anyway, I I think that regardless, knowing historically what has been stored in the yard. Um, it's, I think we're, we do our due diligence to make sure that it's not contaminated and I think they're big.
I guess my concern with us is where this is, that's not always standing up when people decide to sue after the fact anymore, so. Um, you know, I I think we would be, it would behoove us to have the actual report done. Because then I think we, that's focused on that piece of land and and we're declaring. Everything is upfront as we can, but it's just my concern, having had a couple of experiences with people. Of understanding as is where is.
And our solicitor is the one that um said that our contract is good with the as is where is.
Did he?
Yes.
I'd just like to note that if we did do the the, have the study done, I mean, yes, at seven thousand five hundred dollars plus tax. Um, but arguably, if that increased the uh the ability for the lot to be sold, then we would be. Getting that money back essentially from the sale of the property, it wouldn't be a um. Zero sum game.
Yeah.
Then we would, we would actually stand to be able to get it back because I do, I I I do tend to agree. Part of the problem is perception. And so even though we can point to the reports and we can point to the the studies. The perception that there's a problem is out there and that perception has potentially already hindered. Uh, some choices that people may have made about whether to purchase or not, and I think that we can't. I I don't know how we battle that perception without. Doing something that would be very definitive and and to your point about if there is something found there. Um, then yeah, it does just mean that we either. Consider different options for it, but as to Ken's point was that even if there is something found there, the land is still saleable and it can still be built upon. It just limits the type of building that happens there. From my experience with the train station, I would not recommend anybody to put a basement on that land anyways, they will be constantly flooded. That's what happens at the train station and up to our neighbors around us because there's a very high water table there, so it just, it doesn't. That, you know, I think that we could get the money back if if we actually get rid of the perception of the problem.
Yeah.
Um, so with the session, you know, for your points. Okay, I will not be in favor of it, even though I understand and absolutely get your point about perception, but I don't like to pay for perception, I just see. Anyway, uh, so uh, we'll vote on the motion then, if everyone's had their say, all in favor of going with the remediation option?
Not remediation.
Uh, sorry, not remediate.
So.
What is wrong?
The advice of the staff is, yeah.
The assessment option. The assessment option, please indicate your name. And I will vote nay and the motion is carried and thank you, that was good discussion.
So now, since you've moved forward um to have the work done, you have no money in your budget to complete this work. So if you want to have it done now, then I need a motion. Uh, to move forward with this work or if you want to wait till next year's budget and do it in?
Um. I guess question is how urgent is it to sell the piece of property and whether seven thousand five hundred dollars is going to break the budget or are we likely to be able funded from somewhere?
Like, we don't have it anywhere, so it's, it's going to be an adjustment to your current budget.
I mean, we're headed into the time of year, also we're selling, any of it isn't that easy, so we could maybe wait till the budget next year. That's what I'd be inclined to do too, would be to wait till next year and take it off the market for now.
Yeah. Well, I would leave it on the market if that's fine, because.
It could sell.
It could sell and we could use that as a.
As long as declared that somebody might wish to do.
Yeah, and then we could maybe include that in the cost, like we will do the assessment, if you're, if you're interested in the property, we will, like, we will do the assessment. And you have the results to see and then that would be a.
Yeah.
Thing on the sale, uh, or and then when the um. I can't remember how many days I signed it for, so.
Yeah.
And then once it's over, when it runs out, it runs out.
Oh, that's actually much better, I think that's a much better way to go.
Is that?
Yeah.
Fine, okay.
Okay, so we're all good with that? Right. Something of strength from council?
My workers.
Thank you, Ken. Take some for then. There's not concern. Some from them, there's not concern.
All right.
It's the spirit of it, so. There's not, there's none for that.
So I think that concludes, uh, or actually should putting be dealt with as an addition under new business.
Yeah, so that's our new business one.
Yes, yes, twenty. So under new business, we have an extra item, which is footing and the need for. Council motion with respect to the status of the people leaving and delegation of France.
Okay, so I made that the town accept the official invitation from the town of Royale, France. To take part in a formal twinning visit October twenty twenty five and that members of council and staff travel to Royale at their own expense.
I'll second that motion.
Discussion? It's great.
I'm excited for all of you, I wish I was going, but.
This will allow staff and members of council or going and C I O to claim a tax, we see, basically, for the, what they're spending of their personal money.
Because it makes it an official.
It isn't, it was always an official visit, but we didn't have a motion saying it was an official visit.
Yeah.
So that, yeah.
Yeah.
No, I think this is a therapy.
Yeah, I think this is a great thing to do and I'm, it's smart to kind of capture that where we can. And I also just think it's great that you guys get to.
Uh, wait till.
We're getting ready, we can make the first train trend.
We will all be on our cell phones waiting for text messages.
On the train, it would be us, right?
They never got off.
I don't know.
All right.
End up in the Atlantic Ocean if we don't get off.
So all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried, thank you. So that is it for new business, I believe, we're on to unfinished business and we have the growth and renewal for infrastructure development program, grid.
Grant.
Over to the C I O.
Okay, so um, we have our, we are applying again. For grid for the shoreline restoration project, because we're, you know, just a couple hundred grand short. Um, so our S C C F application um was supposed to be announced by the end of September. Um, it looks like it's a couple weeks late. So I am just putting in the grid just in case we don't get that one, we have, this is, this will be our application.
Right, and you remind me what S C C F stands for, please.
The Santa Lou Community Challenge.
Fund, okay, thank you.
And was that for four hundred thousand?
Which one?
The S.
C C F, yes. And the grid, and the grid we're applying for just two hundred and eighty K.
So is that the maximum we can apply for, is that just to a name?
No, we're just very specific, what we want, what we need and hoping that this time, because last time we asked for. Um, a higher amount, so this time we're just asking for our needs to come at net zero.
All right, so that's clear as mud, this is an insurance grant, we write insurance grant. So do we have a mover?
I'll move that.
Give a second. Yeah, do I need to read that motion?
Yes. I move that council approve the submission of the shoreline restoration project under the growth and renewal for infrastructure development project in the amount of two hundred and eighty thousand.
I'll sign that, all right, further discussion? We've discussed it, we know what we're doing, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried and thank you for writing that grant, I know it's not much fun.
Okay.
And then we get to the exciting part, letter to officials about the municipal government. No, no, uh, sorry, I'm in the wrong area.
We still, we're still on tax sale.
Yes, I just dumped it down here, property tax sale.
So I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware that the property that was on for tax sale at one forty one Richie Street has been redeemed. So it is no longer going through sale.
Yes, that's the news.
Yeah, yes.
Onto the board of the condo, A C C C six ratification motion. So this all came about because there was a uh A G M of the condo board last week. And of course, uh, our vote is just shy of. God, it's around twenty two percent, two percent, uh, so we're an important part and the deadline for the vote is October thirteenth, of course, which we won't be meeting. So that's why I sought council's opinion before, uh, so that you weren't seeing it at the last minute. So if we could just have uh the motion and then we can go over that.
I move for council to ratify the electronic vote that was emailed out. On Thursday, September twenty fifth, twenty twenty five, that the town's representative for the board of condo. A C C C six vote, yes, to the proposed changes to the condo bylaws. And declaration based on the bylaw and declaration package for for the, by the C I O to all members of council on September eighteenth, twenty twenty five.
I'll second that.
You know. So discussion. So I signaled based on your ratif, your, not your ratification, sorry, based on your electronic vote, I signaled to them that they had one signature. I told them that they couldn't get a second one until the council had ratified it. So with your permission, we'll get somebody to sign, because it required two signatures. And so at least they they knew which way the town was going to go. They didn't have to worry about that. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried, great, thank you, it's done. Okay, back to where I was here, okay, so now we're on to reports and the only report you have is Valley Regional Services Board of Directors and from board report. That's a big mouthful there. So you have the update on Valley Waste and Case Transit and other reports, I gather, are suspended until October. Well, that's good, right off the hook for that. So under correspondence.
And we were gonna add the C I O report under that report.
Oh, yes, absolutely, we have the C I O report, so over to you.
So I just wanted to add the newsletter went out on Monday. Um, but just wanted to make sure everybody realized that with the Canada post strike, that the water bills did not get mailed out in time. So they are still due on October thirty first. Uh, you can stop in uh between ten and three, Monday to Friday, get a copy of your bill, uh, if you need it. Um, you can make payments the normal way here at town hall when we're open or the drop off box. Um, online banking is also an option. Um, and so of course then, I'm not sure how long this expected to go on, but the tax bills are also going out at the end of. October, due the end of November, so if the strike is still on, you can also request a copy of your tax bill. Um, so just wanted to be clear that they are still due and they will be charged um interest if not paid on the deadline.
I think the news got out because I was told to come and pick up mine.
Can the tax bills be requested now or do they?
No.
Okay, so when's the earliest they can pick?
Um, they are probably not doing that to that last, so it would be until.
Could, is there, so I, I mean, I saw the email, um, could that be put on like Facebook too perhaps?
Uh, yep.
Every time the town puts something out like that on Facebook, then I share through my page and try to get further reach on.
Yeah, I think it went out through mail to him.
Yeah.
On. The Monday. Yes.
Yeah. So I'm just wondering if we could have a a post on Facebook, on the town's Facebook page.
We can always get our own, so.
Yeah.
Another way to get a message out. Yeah, we're got a couple of things that are waiting to go on Facebook, we don't have enough time to.
We'll probably have, so.
We can add it to the list.
You should probably flag on here somewhere the uh upcoming engagement thing to talk for topics. Wondering how we're going to do that. For the, for the.
November.
Session that we have.
November twenty.
The one that Sybil candid then.
Yeah, so we will have that on the agenda for November.
That sounds good, yeah. And might need a heads up because if one of the subjects communications is some prep that has to be done, so, okay, great.
So and the other item um was that our intact um grant that we applied for a couple of years ago. Has been approved in the. has been approved, and the press release was done on uh Monday, the twenty-ninth as well, so keep pleased to say that we received another um, two hundred thousand dollars from intact. And that's part of the um, insurance that we're gonna make our
And the men's group from the United Bridge, I believe, uh, like I'm speaking to them on October sixth, and I believe the profit will be that project.
Oh, nice.
Yeah. Because I didn't have any other, so that was the only one I could think of that might be relevant to them. So that's what they're gonna get.
Excellent.
Okay, so we're good on that. So we'll go to correspondence, item two. Letter elect to elected officials, municipal government survey that was sent out by our president Pam Moon, everyone saw that. So that was a good example of NSFM at work with us during the survey, and it was a good example when things work, they really work. So they uh, so this is not going to happen.
Yeah, there was, just to add to that, there was a, in the survey, for those of us who did it, you will have seen, there was a lot of open-ended um answers to questions, and so there that, those answers are really difficult to disseminate out, you know, in a sensible way. So they're actually going to take all of those open-ended question answers and basically do an assessment and an analysis of them, and that will be part of the the additional information that's sent out in the future.
And that's good, that's great. And of course, uh, Adele is our representative, the valley representative on NSFM, so thanks for that, Adele.
You're welcome.
Just until November.
Uh, I
Is that correct?
I think
After the meeting is over?
I think it's I think you go one more after that to the end of November, I think, is how it works.
Would make sense.
Yeah, because they have to
They were trying to drum up people to
Yeah, you have to declare, and so uh just to note that um the nominations close on October third, and um there was a lot of fast and furious emails coming out to the NSFM board today, um, really encouraging anybody to get their, their, their packages in that that might need to. Um, and in fact, you don't have to submit the full package if you just want to send an email in that has your nominator and your seconder, um, they will accept that. And then work with you to get the rest of the package later on.
After that date?
Yeah.
Couldn't weather the big package, it was, you know, a whole lot of homework to do. But did you submit it?
Yes, that was done today.
Okay, so those emails came to me probably before Do you, do you mind if I speak to that a little bit? So um if, just to be clear and for the record, I have thoroughly enjoyed the last year on NSFM. Um, and I think that there's an incredible value in in us having representation there. We provide, our community provides a really unique perspective, but you're actually representing the whole valley, so you're speaking with everybody. Um, I I intend to continue to put my name forward for committee work, but I did not seek the nomination um this time, because I still had a full-time job. So it was a little challenging to balance the meeting times. However, it was my absolute pleasure to nominate our mayor, Emery Boyd, thank you. And so um I'm really hopeful that she secures the seat as the Annapolis Valley Representative, which will have her secured in that seat for the next two years if she gets it, because there's a lot of things that NSFM are doing that um can help us, help our community, and by extension, the communities around us. And they, they basically, if you think of NSFM as um the advocacy or lobby organization for elected officials, that's kind of the way to think of them, and they're doing a lot of really good work on that front, so. Yeah, thank you for allowing me to have that experience for life.
Service on it, and that continues, you'll be at the conference.
Yes, yeah. I'm sharing a couple of sessions at the conference, so that should be interesting.
Hey, all right, we'll look forward to that, because um, CIO's going, I'm going.
Yeah, yeah.
So we'll clear this will be in the same place. And then you have the letter from Pam Moon, letter to elected officials saying that strong mayor's powers did not, did not fly. So they, again, another example of where voice matters.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I was really happy to see that, that was a relief. I just could not imagine what we're in for.
Especially midstream. In especially In the middle of a, of an election, so. Not even the middle, the first quarter.
So I think we have covered everything in the this meeting, and if anything we left out. Okay, and we have one member of the public present. We're going, I'd like to move in camera, but did you have any elements?
I just wanted to thank you. Let you know that I just started a new position with Public Health, so I'm the new health promoter supporting municipalities and community partners across Annapolis County.
Health promotion.
Lovely.
Yeah, good.
Touch with many of you, I just started, but I wanted to come to your committee of the hall.
Well, don't forget us.
We are, very much so.
Okay, I will email. It's Erin Todd.
Erin Todd, nice to meet you.
You're welcome, Erin, thank you for coming.
Yeah. I haven't been to her house now. What can we do? It's gonna see you, Erin, for joining us.
And just to note for you, uh, we have three people watching the meeting live.